We ask you to be with us today to guide us, give us your wisdom as we proceed on the work of St. Petersburg College. And we ask that you be with each and every one of us as we go through this day and this week. These things we ask now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll now have a retirement resolutions and Dr. Law.
Thank you very much. Carol, we're gonna do it this way, right? Okay. Carol Nygaard began her career in the Word Processing Department on the Clearwater Campus of St. Petersburg College, formerly St. Petersburg Junior College. Carol became known and admired throughout the college through her hard work and helpful spirit. And Carol transferred from the Clearwater Campus to Institutional Advancement at Epi Services in 2009. Carol quickly became an integral part of Institutional Advancement, lending her energy and skills to many projects while helping to improve the department's organizational quality. And Carol has shown a willingness to learn new skills eagerly, including the operation of the college's electronic signs. And Carol works with patience and attention to detail while staying always mindful of deadlines. Carol has a warm, helpful, and generous spirit. We wish her happiness in her retirement as she travels, bowls, enjoys the company of her Bichon Sophie, and spends time with her family and loved ones. Now therefore, be it resolved that St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Carol Nygaard, and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead, adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 18th day of October 2010. Carol, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, let's do this. We turn this. There we go. Well, y'all are supposed to stay up here. I'm walking up here. This is friends who are monitoring. Get behind here. What are your friends?
Congratulations. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
It says, "Not expected to be here." Okay. I entertain the motion that we accept a retirement resolutions. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We now have a very special visitor. And Dr. Law, I would ask you to please do the introduction.
Thank you very much. One of the most important jobs, one of the most important parts of my job is interaction with our other colleagues throughout the county in areas related to education. Before I was even hired, I had the opportunity to sit down and meet Dr. Julie Jansen, our Superintendent of Schools for Pinellas County. Julie and I share a great deal of common interest, energy, and vision. We made the kinds of promises to each other that you would expect, let's find ways to work to the benefit of our students. We thought that one of the most important things we could do is, early on, ask Julie to visit with you and with us so that we can signify and show very publicly our commitment to mutual support. And then following this, I will be meeting with the Pinellas County School Board to do a similar visit. We thought we would do it in August or September. Events always overrun as you want. So we got started on some very exciting things, and we're gonna share with you some of the early progress. But I thought we might get a chance to hear the Superintendent's vision, her commitment to us, and certainly her ideas as to how we can best support her. So Superintendent Jansen, please join us, okay? Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm honored to be here to meet with you and to finally get to meet everyone on the board. I think I'm familiar with most. When Dr. Law took over the helm of St. Pete College, it was actually, immediately, we started off on lots and lots of ideas. Most of those things have already come to fruition, and we continue to work together. But we have other things on the horizon. I'd like to talk just a little bit about how much has happened in just a couple of months. We'll start with that, which is probably the most publicized, and that one is the partnership that St. Pete College forged with us at Gibbs High School, allowing our students to take the CPT tests. We were really pleasantly surprised at the number of students that were very capable of going on. Of our English comp, we had 110 of those students qualified to start writing to English I. You know, we can put away all the rumors that none of our kids are prepared for college. And 80 of our students were ready to take the math. That's near and dear to my heart since I was a math major in school. We have, you know, those students are, you know, successful in spite of all of the noise going on around them. And I mean that figuratively, not literally. We have had lots of conversation about our African-American males and their lack of graduation. There are lots of reasons that we believe come into play to get the numbers where they are, contrary to the report, the SHOTs report that you received that was very public. The reason our numbers looked the way they did, and we sent a report to the state, there's a time when Pinellas County, sometimes we do things and shoot ourselves in the foot, that we kept everyone at ninth grade until they became juniors. You know, not only did they have to have the credits, they had to have specific credits, and it, you know, many times those kids went from ninth grade to graduation, or ninth grade immediately onto graduating in their third year, which some of our students sign up for. But our actual graduation rate for our African-American males is over 50 percent. It's about, we're a point below the state, I believe, but we're above many others, and that is not good enough. What we have done, and we intend to, as soon as I get the report together, I've asked my research and accountability department to take every one of our ninth graders and disaggregate that by gender and race, and we're going backwards to see from when they came to Pinellas County schools, every measurement we have on them: grades, standardized tests, attendance, discipline. And then I'm going to bring in the, I've already spoken to Mayor Foster, we're going to bring in the municipalities of those students and look by zip code. Are there things that, is it a high crime area those children grew up in? And we're trying to find out if there's some thread in that DNA that makes some students very successful and makes some students not so successful. Once we get that body of knowledge, that data, we are going to put together a small group to start looking at what commonalities are there of the successful children and those that are not. And this way now, we can start tracking them until they graduate from high school for us. That's an exciting piece because I know that you have a group already focused on that, so us bringing you some data, I think, would help. We have somewhere to start. I approached Dr. Law about a pre-K program that would be housed on the all-state campus. Many of our students come to us from pre-K, not prepared for kindergarten. And unless you have certified and qualified teachers teaching the curriculum that is prescribed, those students will still be behind. And so we approached the idea of putting our certified teachers or hiring certified teachers and creating a larger pre-K. Because of class size, many of our schools are not able to carry the pre-K program simply because of the physical size of our buildings. We've talked about that, and over the last week, I mentioned to Dr. Law an idea of creating a third Center for Wellness. We all know that in future jobs, the one thing that certain people eat and people get sick. And so if we create another avenue, like we have the one at Palm Harbor and one at Bogasiega, we could create one in the middle with partners such as St. Pete College. I've already approached a couple of people in the healthcare business to see if some of the medical entities would like to join us. And so that is just one or two of the ideas. Dr. Law has sent a number of staff members to work one-on-one with our faculty and staff at Gibbs and to work with our students at Gibbs to really help bring the bond so that they can advance and know some success in their lives.
Can I ask you a question? The African male dropout has always been a concern of this board, and I wonder if there's some way we can maybe put a joint task force together to bring our resources to bear to help out with this problem.
That would be wonderful.
I've talked to Dr. Law, and he certainly didn't discourage me. In fact, he encouraged me to bring this up. But it seems to me that if we had a joint group that could really study this problem and possibly work on, that's just my idea right now, an AA degree that may take more than two years. It may take a third year with behavioral patterns thrown in. I don't know. Or just catch-up. But it seems like if we worked at this together, we could probably accomplish a lot more than you working alone, even though that's your expertise. I just would like to see us, Mr. Chairman, as a board, because we watch graduation, and some of us sit there and count that African male, and they're not there. And we wish in a way that they were, because if we don't do something, we're gonna lose a whole generation again. And we've already done this for too many generations. And I think it's time that we look at this in a serious manner, and we're all in this about educating students.
Right.
It just depends on what age they are. If there's something we can do, and I would like to challenge you and Dr. Law to come back, maybe a task force made for both institutions, because we'd like to see these students not only graduate from high school, but to proceed on to an AA or a BA or wherever they're capable of going. And rather than see them getting lost in the shuffle and end up in wherever they are because they're not contributing to society, and we want them to be contributing. I think they'd be happier if they were contributing. And I don't know, Dr. Law, if that's a possibility that we could explore. I can put it in your hands and our chairman's hands, and certainly in your hands, Mr. Jansen, that we could do something. Because rather than study this forever, I'd like to say is put a date on it and say, let's have a program in place by summer. We can work on it in the spring semester, because we're already in the fall semester, and come back in a few months' time with some ideas and start to put together maybe some joint classes somewhere in the system with whatever criteria we came up with was we needed to move these particular students on. It might end up being discriminatory, but I'd love to have somebody come back and say, "You're discriminating."
I'm excited about the opportunity. I see Watson Haynes here. We are getting smarter by the day in our partnership with our friends at Pinellas County Schools and at Gibbs High School about what really matters. How can we take definitive, observable, measurable steps? So we're well past the stage. Can I ask Watson to just outline two? Watson, come on up. He has really been the point person for me. We have a, oh, a multi-part strategy. Watson, just briefly, you mentioned giving a CPT test. Now here's the deal. We tested hundreds of kids, and we found that we're ready now to start offering dual enrollment. If you're ready for Composition I, we can offer Composition I. So we got 100 kids who can take Composition I, have 80 kids who can take college-level math. So those are two areas right away that we'll be expanding dual enrollment. There are others, though, Watson, please pick up. Give me an idea.
And actually, SLS 1101.
Okay, SLS is the student success course. Every one of our students takes that.
That rolls out today. Those students who took the CPT but did not pass the CPT, we've already developed a program for them. And then we're working on some things for underachievers. Keep in mind that the relationship between the school board and ourselves is a very close relationship. And so as we, you know, we're not trying to run Gibbs High School. But what we've found, what we have found is that St. Petersburg College faculty, I don't know the word that I could use, the faculty and staff have not only volunteered but put in extra hours and time to assist Gibbs High School in this project. We're trying to make sure we stay at Gibbs. We've got a lot of requests for other schools.
Three others.
They keep saying, "Come to us." We want to make it work at Gibbs High first. Then we have a textbook that we can take this model to another school and tweak it to fit that school, but we'll then know what really works. We've already talked about a summer program last week with J.C. Brockin. J.C.'s always. A J.C. president to talk about rolling out a summer program for those kids. We're also working on developing a relationship with the parents. It's important for college completion that we have parents involved in that process, and they understand that, but they have to understand it at an earlier level and not a later level.
And that's our part. We're getting those kids now. It's just in time. But we really have a plan and a process to get our kids, first of all, in fifth grade, we have to get them interested in taking real classes in middle school. So in our middle school, we have, in every middle school, we have the Avid Program, which helps prepare students to be successful in honors, AP, and to apply to IB and CAT and all of the other programs. And that has been very successful. We are in every middle school and in almost all of our high schools. We have a grant that we're waiting to find out about. If we get that, it'll now be in all high schools immediately. We've had to phase it in because it's very expensive. But that teaches students how to study. It gives them the tools that they need to be successful when they take our honors and AP and IB classes.
Dr. Law, might there be grants that we could apply for, even if it's pilot programs, to kind of do our part in this?
I'm absolutely, don't ask me which ones, but this is a compelling story. You have a high-performing institution. These are what grant agencies look for. I mean, private grant funds. I can't imagine that we can't scope this to a way that, to have a program.
This reminds me of when we took over the charter high school. We took over a charter high school, not that we want to take over the school system. There's enough on our plate. But to work with them, because that charter high school turned into one of the better ones in the state because of the faculty and the expertise that we brought to bear. So it just seems to me that we, as an institution, have something to contribute to this process. And I want to make sure that we are doing it and working hand-in-hand with the school board and let them know that we have resources here, and if we can work together, let's do it.
Mr. Gibbons, did you have any questions?
I did. I have a question and also a comment, Mr. Chair. First of all, welcome, Superintendent Jansen. Thank you so much for coming. You know, I always have a story, but I started out at Baypoint Middle School with Mr. Maraz's math class, and he was a pretty good math teacher, better basketball coach than math. He was a pretty good math teacher. But I asked him, I said, "Look, I'm not that good in this math stuff, and I think I have pre-algebra." And I got to Lakewood High School, and I can honestly say that I got through high school because I got a good foundation in algebra. And at that time, Ms. Jansen was my math teacher, so she was exceptionally well. She still looks the same, so I'm wondering, is high-stress job doing it because she feels the same as she did then? But thank you for coming, and thank you for all the things you're doing. And I know you don't hear this enough, but I will always be supportive of you because I know you really care about the young people in this county and the kids in our communities. And I don't care what the school board says, you're doing a great job. Keep going down that path, and we'll be here to support you. Number two is, Mr. Johnston brings up a very good point. I think Ken is the person that he's talking about. By the time we sit down, Mr. Burke has counted how many African-American males are graduating in that class, and it's always too few. There's always African-American women that are graduating in our classes, but we don't see enough males. I will tell you, this week I got an eye-opener. I was over in Osceola County with a former state representative, Atkinson, who will be going off because of term limits this year. And I did not know this, in our county, we had Maverick School, like he has over there. I took a tour of that school, and Mavericks, now, don't ask me, but it has like, you know, you can keep mature, something, something, all the way down, that's what Mavericks mean. But the thing is that they take the unconventional student and they allow them to graduate on their own pace. So if the kid can pass the high school course by taking a test or the college course, they can take all that right there online. There's, you know, the instructor's in the room, but they're right in front of a computer. So ENC 1101, if they can do all the requirements in three weeks, they pass that course, they move on to the next one. In high school, the same thing. And I know Dr. Jansen is moving in that track. And I think that St. Pete College, with the amount of technology that we have, Dr. Law, and the things that you've already done at TCC, I think this is right down the alley of like a learning lab or something related to that so that we can figure out how to get these young people moved along successfully. The African-American male, as Mr. Haynes can tell you, has a lot of issues as it relates to family, community, trying to get out of a, an environment. I mean, I got so many ribbons from my dad, but I had no other choice in other people, you know, Tanja Williams' mother and my grandmother, and so many other people that took an interest in me and pushed me and made sure that I didn't get involved in those elements. But there are some kids who are trying to do, take care of family, trying to go to school, trying to balance so many things. And as a 16 or 14 or 15-year-old, it's almost impossible. I mean, eventually, something's gonna gobble them up. And some of these young people don't have any, any place where they can turn to somebody who actually loves them. They think that these groups love them, but they don't. And I mean gangs and other elements that are out there. So that is, it's a tough task, a tall task, Mr. Johnston. But the only thing that I ask is that, don't mind if we do these types of things, I just want to make sure that we're talking to the young people to make sure that we're really doing what they need. Because we always get caught up in trying to put a task force together, and we never talk, and it's just like, you know, it never ceases to amaze me in our own office. We make all these rules, but we never talk to the person who's out in the front line doing the job. Let's talk with these young people and make sure that we're actually doing things that are gonna actually benefit them in the end. So if you will, I would ask that we make sure that on this task force that we have, people, young people that are going through this. And I'd also ask that Starla Metz be on there, because she is seeing a lot of the things, you know, she has seen and also is seeing some of the effects of, you know, some of these students are struggling in our collegiate high school, but she's put backdrops in to make sure that they don't fail. And I've even seen, I talked to Dr. Darrell Wilson a couple of weeks ago at, and I said this before, at Stetson Law School. Law School students now have tutors because they don't want people failing. We don't, we want our kids to fail. So if we can get those backstops put in so that these young people, when they do fall, they're not out of the game, they can still stay in, and we can still figure out how to make them be successful. And the other thing is, you know, maybe this all-state program is gonna be, I think it will be great. I'm all for it. But I would also ask that, remember, the African-American males that we're trying to reach are in this midtown community. And I know Dr. Law is looking to expand that site. I always call it a campus. I've been told it's a site. That site, so that we can touch and have outreach to more of those folks that we need to help. Now, all that being said, we're still a college, but we need to partner with the school system, and I'm 100% behind that. And thank you again, Dr. Jansen, for all you do for our community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, if I could, the thrust now is to do as much as we can for dual enrollment. I'm really excited. If we can change the flavor inside the institution and have kids talking about earning college credits, we will have done a, we will have moved the ball forward significantly, and we're gonna change the whole flavor there. There's gonna be so much dual enrollment. This time next year, we'll be talking about kids who've already earned 12 or 15 hours. Tell me, we're gonna have kids with 20 or 25 hours of dual enrollment by the time they graduate or more. That's one. Secondly, our College of Education people have been very helpful, working with the teachers at Gibbs, and that partnership can only get stronger and, I think, more robust for both of us. And Kay Berniston has been particularly helpful. Dr. Joe Smiley has invested himself in helping organize the dual enrollment. But you know, Joe's a sociologist, and he is working very hard to support the parent part of that. So we have a special opportunity to talk to parents of the kids who are in our dual enrollment. So three or four things. Watson has been his usual energy center on this. I think we started this two months ago, and we have defined progress. Giving the CPT, the college placement test in the high school early, has allowed us once again to change the flavor. We tested 500 kids, I think, so they already know they're taking a test that leads them to college. You hear my enthusiasm starting to bubble up, because I think these are real changes that take place. Not every kid yet, it's a long way from the finish line, but it's making a difference. And we can replicate it. Please tell our friends at the other schools, when we know what we're doing, we'll be happy to sit down with them. It's a work in progress right now, so it's not intended to end here in the next couple of weeks. Mr. Johnston, we will build on what we're doing to package it, I think, even a little stronger and more robust, as you're talking about, to include a summer program, a whole identity for what we're trying to accomplish, pull it together.
I just wanted to be sure that the rest of the board is probably just as enthusiastic as maybe Deborah and I are on moving forward this. And I'd like to make a motion, I'm not sure what it is, but it's a motion that we give full board support to this program that we're talking about. It's an intangible program, but to move forward so that everyone at the college, including staff and faculty, know that the board is 100% behind us.
That's a good motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I think we've had enough discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Watson, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I just want to add that, Mr. Chairman, the students at Gibbs High School are really into this. They love the relationship with this college and have said so. We had an athlete who said that, "Look, when the scouts come and talk to me now, I can show a relationship with St. Petersburg College, and that's less questions that they have to ask me about college." And I think that goes over being, they're rolling out, is Wilmer here?
Yes, Wilmer.
Wilmer Norton met with those students and asked them, "How can we brand this thing?" We'll be coming back to you about it, but they have, they rolled off such things in that meeting about the excitement of Gibbs High associated with the college that has been unbelievable. They said, "We want everything. If you send something home to a parent, put a St. Pete College brand on it. If you send a letter, put St. Pete College on it." So that's the kind of excitement, and that's coming from the students. So we just thank you. We're just very excited and thank Dr. Law.
Please leave. Thanks. Now, I would like to get back to the superintendent.
I have to brag that St. Pete College.
Thank you, Watson.
I am an alum. It was junior college at the time. But they have, everyone has always had an open arm. I know last year Dixie Hollins invited, you know, the college into do the CPT testing over there, and that really helped our children, our students, get focused and get graduated on time. So thank you, and I am honored to be able to be a partner with such a great institution. The teachers that come from your College of Ed, amazing. And we love the pre-service that you're doing with them so that they don't have to do the reading endorsement and ESOL endorsement after they come to us, especially because their plates are so full then. So thank you for letting me be here, and I'm excited to move forward and to have Dr. Law at our meeting to share some of this with our board.
Dr. Jansen, it was great having you here. I just have a few comments. First of all, I want to compliment you, and I don't know the person individually, other than what I've read through the newspaper about him, but it seems like the principal you have in place at Gibbs High School seems to be a real dynamic person who's really doing a tremendous job there. So that's a tribute to your leadership that you placed a person like that in that role. Also, you taught me something today, that students need to be kindergarten-ready. I mean, that's, that's a different concept for, we were in kindergarten many, many years ago. Kindergarten-ready, that's something I've learned. And also, your final comment about our teachers, and that's something I want to thank you and the Pinellas County School System, because the primary group of employment is obviously the Pinellas County School System for the folks who graduate from our college. And I think it's been a good partnership of y'all serving on our committees to help us on our College of Education and us being able to graduate teachers who meet the needs in a real practical sense. And we want to always have that relationship there and always invite you to give us input on what we can do better with our College of Education to produce the best possible teachers for Pinellas County. So thank you for that part of our relationship. So thank you for that part of, um, of our relationship. And I certainly appreciate you being here today. Terry, did you have any comments?
Just briefly, Dr. Jansen, thank you very much for being here. And I think the last time that we got to see you here, at least that I got to see you here, was when we had a public forum-
Yes.
Uh, asking for all the stakeholders in Pinellas to come here and tell us what we needed in our next president.
Yes.
And you were one of the first. And so I, I am just thrilled that you're back again and it seems like things are picking up steam in a hurry and I, and I appreciate that. Um, I put four of my children through fundamental school in Pinellas and it was the best education they could have ever received. And when I read recently about some of your new initiatives that you are pushing forward, I, I thought back about how hard we tried to get uniforms at the fundamental schools. And then when I saw that you, that was on the list, if you can get that done, I want you to come back, we're gonna give you a real big medal. But kudos to you and the job that you're doing. It's an incredible job and I'm, uh, we're, we're proud that you're leading the helm. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I just wanna, I think it's a great idea for Gibbs and for SPC and that we could help students. And I was wondering if we have any kind of a mentoring program for individual, I mean, for the individual students.
Yes, we do. In fact, um, we have Big Brothers, Big Sisters who's a partner with us. And, um, when I talked about some of our children not having an adult in their life, Mayor Foster volunteered 100 of his employees to give them some time. We have agreed to do the same from anyone that's not on, directly on a school campus, anyone that works for Pinellas County Schools, 100 there as well. And I'm sure that we'll get at least 100 through Dr. Law's-
Well, that's very good. Thank you and I'm glad to meet you for the first time.
Same, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just letting you know that Kevin Gordon, the principal down at, um, Gibbs High School is Myrtle Williams' son-in-law.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
If you know anything about Myrtle, he's gonna get all the people he can from St. Pete College.
Myrtle's probably not admitting that because she looks so young. Thank you again, Dr. Jansen, for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. J, I'm sorry. Dr. Jansen mentioned about a wellness partnership. We're gonna be recognized by the Tampa Bay Business Journal. Do we have that presentation?
Could I ask Patty Jones and Steve Mallett to come forward? Okay. They'll have to describe the actual award, but we have in our hand-
A Tampa Bay Business Journal recognizing St. Petersburg College, uh, for the, in the category of up to 5,000 employees for wellness program. Patty, Steve, tell us a little bit about the program and the, the recognition that you deserve for this.
Thank you, Dr. Law. Hello, good morning, Board members. This really is Steve's story season with us about a year and a half. And since coming to the college, he has helped to energize wellness activities throughout. We have campuses actually now getting excited about their opportunities. Dr. Jim Oliver had a wellness week on his campus a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Vidito's doing more with wellness opportunities on his campus. Every campus I could say, but it all really started with Steve's leadership. Can you talk a little bit about this specifically?
First of all, he looks very physically fit.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, Board. Uh, we, we've taken some great steps forward in wellness this year. We were recognized for some of the reimbursements we've made, uh, allowed our employees to, to take, uh, to qualify for. Um, we've also done a lot of, uh, some in-class lunch and learn sessions and, um, and we're just, we're being real leaders in the community. So it was nice to be able, to be recognized. Uh, we were, we're recognized next to the city of Clearwater, Moffett Cancer, Moffett Cancer Center, uh, and some other very reputable organizations here in the county. So it's a very nice, uh, very nice award and I look forward to just continuing the momentum.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a little break just to have a picture taken with the superintendent. I wanna point out also, the superintendent's a Florida State fan. Oh, my God.
I've seen you on the bus some trips, so.
Oh, yes.
Usually down to Miami with bad news. This was a good one.
Hold on, we gotta, hold on, we gotta get, uh, I'm gonna lose Terry.
Oh, good. He's going? Yeah, he didn't go.
She won't be in the back.
Yeah. Go on. 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 Go on.
Definitely the award was the highlight.
Yeah. Fielding was not a highlight that night. Awful.
But I should, I should indicate, uh, this one is for our environmental commitment in the construction of our facilities there. So, Michael, Susan, a couple of, just some of the key points in that LEED certification that we have.
Um, our LEED certification process is something that we're very excited about and we build all of our buildings to LEED silver standards. Susan and Tracy Steen in the past pioneered, um, the House bill that required that all state funds go towards building a certified building. Our design guidelines require us to take it to the next level up to a silver certification. And we go through, about half of the buildings go through, through the process for gold certification or the full certification process. You've seen the St. Pete Gibbs Student Services Building, the Natural Science and Math at Clearwater, um, and the Vet Tech Building. We're looking at getting at least silver, close to gold on that one as well as we complete that, um, at the end of the summer. So we're really excited about implementing this, you know, in all aspects.
Congratulations. Always good to get the recognition too. Susan?
Um, the other thing is, part of what you do when you, um, do a LEED certified building is not just the building, but, you know, the exterior of the building. And, um, one of the things we put in at the St. Pete Gibbs Campus is a butterfly garden and enhance the exterior. So, um, they, they mention that also as part of the award, but we're really proud of this. We had the first, um, academic gold building in Pinellas County, um, so, so we were higher education gold buildings. We're really proud, proud of the initiative and, and moving that forward here at the college. So, thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
I have a very nice presentation to make. We have, uh, a person who served us very ably as board chair from July of 2008 to July of 2009 and we never properly recognized him with a plaque at the end of his tenure as chairman. And I would like Deborah Givens to recognize these-
Give him a picture here. Give him a ticket out of the plastic if you're gonna get it.
I'm gonna keep it in there so he doesn't have to put it back in. Give him a box of talks there. And thank you for your leadership during that time, Deborah. And those are, that's my report. Any board members have a report to give at this time?
No.
Mr. President, do you have any reports?
Uh, I have comments later on. One, just one thing to, to highlight. On October 26th, we will be holding the All College Professional Development Day. The, uh, we suspend classes for the day and I think for the first time- What's that date again, please? October 26th, we'll be on Clearwater Campus from 8:30 to 3:30. All college employees, budget employees have been invited, so there are academic tracks, student affairs tracks, and general tracks, more than 100 workshops for everyone throughout the day. Uh, we will be using that as an effort to both-
Excellent.
Uh, build, you know, the kind of camaraderie would help and then focus on some of our, our key directions that we're moving. So, uh, it's a huge undertaking. Again, Patty and the, the senior staff have, have done this, uh, and, uh, please join us at any part there. Obviously lunch during the day and workshops at your convenience. We can't host everybody in one general keynote, so it'll be a series of keynotes, but if you can be there any part of the day, we'll send you the detailed schedule. Feel free to come out.
October 26th.
October 26th at Clearwater. Please come. That's it for now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, uh, comment, you all are going off shortly to Toronto. To remind you that, talk to the powers-to-be, um, about how they're gonna evaluate the completion part of our students. Cause like we talked before, the way they measure completions may not be in the best interest of the community college system.
And that's, that's a continual dialogue which, um, I, I do say though, the, the good part is our advocacy organizations, ACC and ACCT are, are certainly getting that message across. Um, the bottom line though, is that we need to do a better job in completion too. And, um, you know, we've always said we're the open door place, well, we have to be the success place too. So I mean, um, the measurement's important, but, uh, we have to commit to our students to do a better job of, of making sure they do succeed with a degree or certificate of some type or completion, whatever that completion's defined as.
Right.
If it's just updating and honing your skills, then that's completion. But let's, let's define it better. That's the question.
Yes.
Uh, one thing too, and Deborah Boyle's been a saint in working with us and trying to come up with a time for our retreat.
That's the latest.
And, and maybe you, I think you had a good idea in, um, maybe combining it with a board meeting and maybe even our January board meeting, board members can look at and say, maybe that morning we have a board meeting and then that afternoon we have lunch and, and have the retreat.
That's a good idea.
And just instead of putting a half a day for that January meeting, we put the whole day. Is there, is there a thought on that among our board members? I know you're, you all probably have to check your calendars. If not that January, then February, but let's, maybe that's the-
It's a good idea, I think.
We do it once. What is the January proposed date?
Um, 7, uh, 18. 18. There's a holiday around that.
Martin Luther King holidays coming in. When?
Probably the 17th. I would imagine Martin Luther King.
It would be the day after the MLK holiday.
That's a really good plan. That, if, is it the 18th? The 18th would be Tuesday, the 18th.
All right.
Monday is a holiday, but that's, that's okay.
Okay, so let's put that date down, full date, and why don't you send a confirmation email after this, Deborah, and thank you for your patience dealing with us on this.
Good idea.
1-18, all day. Is that meeting already scheduled for here?
I don't know.
There's a dance break.
I don't know.
Okay. Um, very good. The minutes, does anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move approval.
Motion's been made in second. It all favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, Mr. Linehan, it's always good to see you here. Do you have any update for us?
There's no report to make.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, from our General Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Um, there is, I, I, I had a conversation with Mr. McKenzie before the meeting and he's gonna give us an update, um, through our normal mail package on any, um, pending litigation. So y'all can look at that and call him individually for questions. Uh, we'll now move to the, I'm sure I got this right?
Hello.
To the reports. And we first have from our Health Education Center, Dr. Phil Nikotera.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Numbers to the board, Dr. Law. This morning I wanted to give you a snapshot of a longstanding tremendous program that we have at the Health Education Center. We call it the New Initiative Program, which is similar to learning support on the other sites. However, we do dedicated group and one-on-one tutoring and there you can see the numbers of staff that we have. The other thing I wanted to point out this morning was the increase in usage of, of the tutoring services that we have. That really accounts to a little bit more than two tutoring sessions per student at HEC. Now, we all know in reality, some students don't take advantage of the service and others do. This morning I wanted to focus on two important points of what, of initiatives that we're doing, uh, at HEC with this program. The first one is about two and a half years ago, we looked at the interest, the increased interest in students, students had in health programs. And one of the, one of the difficulties we saw that students were having was number one, in understanding admission requirements because we can be quite confusing at times. And, and the second thing was the competitiveness of the programs. So with this group, we put together a small group that offers workshops at the Gibbs Campus and Clearwater Campus. They offer semester-long workshops that, uh, give them information about how to get into the health programs, that, that give them, uh, workshops on how to study, workshops on, on time management, how to take tests. And we even tutor on every campus, uh, at least on the Gibbs and Clearwater Campus, in anatomy and physiology. And we chose anatomy and physiology because that's really the gateway course to most, the majority of, of the health programs. And what we've seen over the past couple of years is a tremendous threefold increase in the number of students that attend those workshops. So they're being very successful, uh, in that. The second thing that we're doing is we have a retention specialist and we do, once a student begins to have difficulties, uh, in one of their health programs, we do case management. And, and this semester we began a little study. We, we are looking at three different cohorts and three different programs. And we're studying the reasons why any student that withdraws or has difficulty, we're, we're trying to find out the reasons why they're having difficulties or the reasons why the rest is drawing. And hopefully, once we gather all of that data from these three different cohorts, we can better target our services to help these students. can better target our services to help these students. Because at this particular point in time, we have lots of services, lots of tutoring, but we're not sure, are we hitting the specific needs of those students? So, that's my report for this month.
Phil, that's so good, because that basically plays into what just Mr. Johnson asked about the completion agenda.
Correct.
That's our way of approaching it here in a more scientific, organized, structured way.
Yep.
That's great to hear.
Well, thank you.
I didn't know that y'all were doing that.
Yes.
Brett?
On the retention specialist, do they reach out to the students first, or is the student kind of required to come to them for help? Both ways. Our retention specialist goes to every class at the beginning of the year, and they know that she's available. But most of the health programs, when a student begins to withdraw or a student begins to have problems, they are referred to her from either the instructor or from the program administrators. So, we try to hit them from both ways. And even when they go down for tutoring and we see that they're having difficulty, the tutoring staff will recommend that they go talk to our retention specialist.
How long's that program been affecting the retention specialist?
That has been around a number of years. We've tried, it's probably been around 15 years. It's been called different things over the years, funded through the Perkins Grant. We've really focused in on really...
That's funded through Perkins?
Yes, it is.
That's good to hear, too.
Yes.
That's...
We've focused in more in the past one or two years, really on trying to find what are the reasons and really reaching out to the students.
Does it work?
So far, it does, yes.
How do we measure that?
Well, we're going to measure, I can give you a little statistic of, we brought back into Nursing Four, we did a little group back in Nursing Four about two semesters ago. Students were readmitted back into Nursing Four. We readmitted about 50 students. We mandated to those students, as much as we could, that they needed to do biweekly case management with this individual. Ninety percent of those students passed Nursing Four that semester. And these were readmit students that had been unsuccessful the semester prior to that.
I think it's already too late for this year's conference for submissions for seminars. If this is a good program, this would be an excellent AACC seminar at a convention. I think other colleges would like to know more about and model maybe after what we're doing here.
Great.
Anything else for Dr. Nikotera?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we're going to be talking with you later on today concerning the potential purchase of another building concerning...
Yes, we are. And we're very pleased about that.
So, stay alert.
I'm all here, ready to...
Dr. Veneto from the Clearwater Campus.
Good morning. I wanted to highlight for you this morning our engineering technology program located on the Clearwater Campus. The program is led by Brad Jenkins. Brad has done some great work statewide in creating a framework in engineering technology that's been adopted, which gives an umbrella under which a number of different tracks within the engineering technology program can go forward. On the Clearwater Campus, those include the electronics technology, the quality program, which is the Lean Six Sigma, Black Belt, Green Belt kind of thing, digital design and modeling, which is computer-aided drafting, and biomedical systems. This has been adopted statewide, and it allows for students the ability to transfer credits across institution to institution. And while in some respects that might not seem like much of an accomplishment, moving anything across the state and having it adopted statewide is a challenge. Brad has been a leader in this. It was developed in part under a National Science Foundation grant. Brad is the co-PI on that grant, along with Marilyn Barger from Hillsborough Community College. We've been very active in the grants area. The biomedical systems track was developed under another National Science Foundation grant, which allowed us to develop curriculum for people who were in the medical device manufacturing industry and needed to learn how to navigate the myriad federal regulations to bring a product from the initial stages through testing and finally to market. Anything from an implantable device to a pharmaceutical, to a Band-Aid, frankly. We did that in cooperation with two other colleges, Anoka Ramsey College in Minnesota and Edmunds Community College in Washington State. We were the lead college on this and maintained this grant for five years. We did so well with that grant that the National Science Foundation actually asked us to apply for a planning grant to begin to develop a proposal for a national or regional center. And Friday morning, we spent most of the morning with the president of the Florida Medical Devices Manufacturer Association and Conmed Limbotech, talking about how we might go forward with that. If that would go forward, we probably would look to developing a fifth track within our program, which would be more focused on the technology of manufacturing medical devices. We're also working this week, and we hope to get this put together by Thursday, which is the deadline for the grant application, on a pretty exciting grant, another National Science Foundation grant, in cooperation with Rochester Institute of Technology. And in this grant, we would be training teachers and developing materials to help people who were teaching in the technology areas learn techniques and strategies for dealing with students who are hard of hearing and deaf. And we have, we're really uniquely positioned, both because of our leadership in the technology area, but also because we have the sign language interpreting program on the Clearwater Campus. That's the program. We have, I think, at the last reporting period, 47 graduates from the certificates within that program. Most of those are people who are already employed, who want the CAD or the quality program or the biomedical devices program. And I think 17 graduates from the associate of science degree program.
That's great.
Thank you, Stan. Dr. Veneto mentioned a grant with the National Science Foundation, and our college received some money from that foundation already through, I think it's HCC's the umbrella organization. I don't think we're direct on that. But just so you know, our national association, because people say, well, why do we go to these events, or why do we pay these dues? Actually, the Obama administration, although it's very supportive of community colleges, had a provision in one of the budgets, cut out all funding for community college with the National Science Foundation, and it was AACC who advocated getting that funding back. And our college has touched on that in several ways. So, I mean, again, it shows how things that happen in Washington affect us locally here. Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Dr. White from the St. Pete Gibbs Campus.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Here's the number.
Very colorful. You win the color award.
I have people. Here's the number. At the St. Pete Gibbs Campus in the Natural Sciences Department, unduplicated head count, number of students in biological science and physical sciences, 2,761. Beneath that, you can see the duplicated head count among the various classes and the enrollments, 1,200 enrollments in chemistry. This includes intro, chem one, chem two, organic one, organic two. There's 314 in physics. That's physics one and two for engineers, one and two with calculus. 184 in environmental science and oceanography, 299 in earth science, 138 in astronomy. Under biological sciences, 1,015 in biology. That's for non-majors biology, as well as bio one, bio two, and marine. 1,411 in anatomy and anatomy and physiology, 32 in the science of nutrition, 319 in microbiology. You might also like to know that in our new bachelor's program in biology, we have so far 120 accepted and in that program. Some anecdotal information to go with the numbers. Natural science seems to specialize in those student and faculty connections that are sparked in the classroom and are continually nurtured outside the classroom as well, all leading to that happy circumstance where everybody wins. Everybody learns something, everybody gains something. Some examples from our full-time faculty. Jay Breeland is advisor for Friends of Florida. That's an environmental club. One of their most recent projects was beach cleanup in cooperation with the Clearwater Campus folks. Richard Musgrave advises the peer tutoring club. That's where some of our very best students earn college credit for tutoring their fellow students. Anne Marie Elagon is advisor for the engineering club. This is a fun one. They have worked on a number of interesting projects, including a hydrogen cell to power a golf cart, a turbojet engine, and currently, an automated vehicle platform for a remote-control lawnmower. Plans for future projects include a solar-powered car. Paul Cutlip is developing an exercise in dinosaur physiology. He is planning to place concrete replicas of dinosaur footprints in the grassy area between the science building and the tech building to allow students to calculate the speed and weight of a dinosaur and to make some inferences about dinosaur biomechanics, whatever dinosaur biomechanics are. Craig Joseph, for 15-plus years, continues to run a very successful planetarium program. Dr. Joseph hosts approximately 3,000 guests a year, including church groups, scout groups, school groups, senior citizens. It is the best free show in St. Petersburg, two shows almost every Friday night of the year. Some representative student stories. Susan Meyer is one of our student assistants, graduated from the nursing program. She's now a critical care nurse at Moffitt. And she comes back to HEC, to the NIT program, and tutors nursing students there. Andrew Pham, a former student, is currently an adjunct in the department. He returned to us after receiving his master's degree in biomedical sciences, and he teaches anatomy and physiology labs. Another case, a former student, Dan Schrader. He came back to us after receiving his doctorate in chiropractic medicine, and he also teaches anatomy and physiology. One more student story. We have an undergraduate research group. They are working with Professor Ray Menard. They're doing molecular research projects in collaboration with Bay Pine's Veteran Hospital. So, the natural science department at St. Pete Gibbs is thriving and flourishing, of course, under the leadership of our own Dean Vaughn, together with our team of campus academic chairs. Dr. Stephen Andrasik is the still pretty new academic chair of physical sciences, and Dr. Bev Grunzett for biological sciences. It's a very good team. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Excellent report.
And we certainly appreciate you highlighting faculty and student achievement. That's tremendous.
Thank you.
And Bev, it's good to see you here.
Thank you.
It's good to see you healthy. I didn't even realize, but we're staying our prayers, though, that your good health continues. It's good to have you back. Dr. Mahoney, we didn't wait for the introduction. That's good. You have an aggressive faculty center, right?
Keep talking.
It's good to see you here today.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, Dr. Law, and colleagues. Since my last report to you in August, FGO has been busy. FGO is very pleased to report a significant increase in the number, oh, sorry. Oh, there we go. Thank you. A significant increase in the number of faculty attending our campus meetings. To us, this means that more faculty are interested in participating in FGO and hearing the reports from our senate and executive board meetings. We believe this is due in part to the fact that faculty members believe they are being heard. The faculty is extremely encouraged by the continuing acknowledgement of our input. We have been asked to be a part of various committees, such as the SACS Advisory Committee, the Search and Screen Committee for the new foundation director, and more. Additionally, faculty are being consulted for opinions regarding academic issues, which we believe is a refreshing change. The faculty has asked Dr. Law to support a policy allowing for fixed virtual office hours to replace a limited number of on-campus office hours. This policy will better serve our students who appreciate the time we spend with them online. After a bit more research and a presentation to the president, we are hopeful that this policy will be put into place in January. It has been many years since St. Petersburg College has bestowed the title of professor emeritus on a retired faculty member. We have asked Dr. Law to implement a policy that would allow for more distinguished retirees to earn this prestigious honor. Dr. Law has asked FGO to take the lead in preparing a draft of criteria for his perusal. We are optimistic that a new policy is forthcoming. FGO is actively working to revamp our constitution, as we had mentioned previously. The committee has met and identified the main issues to be addressed. We have started the revision process. Our plan is to have the committee put a draft together, then let all faculty review it for their input. We will then make any revisions necessary before it goes forward for administrative and board approval. We are still on track for a potential spring semester implementation. The faculty is excited that Dr. Law has agreed to look at the compensation structure. A committee has been formed with both faculty and administrative members. Our hope is that there will be a more equitable structure for all faculty. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Mahoney? I certainly appreciate your presentation, and I appreciate your attitude behind each of these objectives, too. I think it's, the usual model of administration versus faculty doesn't need to be here at St. Pete College. We can work collaboratively. We have the same goals. And the attitude, I think, of our faculty is that we work together on these points, and they're certainly reasonable points to be made. So, thank you, Dr. Mahoney. Thank you to the faculty center.
Thank you very much.
Those are good comments. I think that's one thing that we're, I think, noticing, just what you said, Ken, that we're working together on a lot of these projects, and apparently, it's, I think, showing better results.
Good comments. Okay, let's move on to, there is no old business that I know of. Oh, I'm sorry. The student success and achievement, very, very important. And well, I see we have a wonderful person to give us a presentation. We didn't have a name here. Great, thanks. Dr. Williams, always good to see you.
Good morning. It's always a pleasure to share good information with the board and get your feedback.
Thank you.
We're going to talk a little bit about the male outreach initiative, an initiative that the board has supported for a long time and brought back. During the spring semester, you approved reinstituting this program and getting it back in place so that we can provide services to our male students. So, in front of you, you have a more comprehensive plan on how we're going to get this program up and running again, and I will briefly go through a PowerPoint presentation with you to let you know where we are in the process. First, I'm speaking to the choir after having Dr. Jansen here. We know why males. Why are we supporting men? We're having a problem with guys graduating from high school, coming to college, and once they get to college, they're struggling in the transition and making it happen. And then, once they get in here, they're struggling with staying. Our attrition rate is growing with our males. As you know, counting them across the stage and leaning over to me, sharing, Tanya, I only got this many, has been something that we've done over the last couple of graduations, and especially for African-American males and Hispanic men. We are struggling as not only an institution, but as a nation, with the enrollment and the retention of our minority men, as well as with graduation. As you know, with the global economy and how competitive things are, we need some type of post-secondary education to be successful, whether it's a certificate or a college degree. Okay, so what do our males look like right now as far as enrollment goes? You see, from the '09 to the '10 year, we're continuing to grow. Our African-American male students have grown significantly. Our American Indians have grown very minimally. Asians have grown. Hispanics went down, and I thought that was very important for us to know, being that our Hispanic population continues to grow here in Pinellas County, and to know that our enrollment was down this time by a couple of students. The state also has a new definition where students don't have to specify who they are, so that is the inspec group. You see your Pacific Islanders and your white students. The growth is there, and we're doing a great job in some areas, while in other areas, we need to focus better. Retention. I thought that this would be a good measure for us to look at, because it's showing us from Fall '08 to Fall '09 how our male students were retained, how well they did. You see, 58% of those in our first-time-in-college group either returned or graduated, but 42% did not. And if you look at the number, 608 of them, over 571 women did not return from Fall '08 to Fall '09.
Do you have any idea, Dr. Williams, of the students who failed to return, how many of them were percentage part-time versus full-time?
No, I do not have that with me, but I can get it to you.
Because I think that's...
Important.
That's what we keep hearing, that if we can get the student to be full-time, that their chance of success goes up.
Tremendously.
Exponentially.
Well, Ken, that might be fact, too, that they're employed, and it gives an added struggle to them.
Yeah.
Okay, the budget that the board approved for us to get the male outreach initiative up and running includes two coordinators. These coordinators, one is a South County coordinator and one is North County. The North County coordinator is Said Navab, and I will be showing you his name and information. And the counties, the campuses he's responsible for, as well as South County, is Nick Berry. We have funding for faculty champions who will work with us on the campuses to help organize different male initiatives and activities per that campus and what that campus needs are. Each site will have some form of a textbook lending and laptop library, and then there's funding available for different workshops and activities, which will include our males as well as speakers coming in. And these are your two new coordinators. Nick Berry is new to the college altogether. He comes from Pinellas County Schools. And Said Navab was promoted from financial aid. And so, I think with their experience in the county with the school system, as well as here at the college with advising and financial aid, we have a very good group. As you can see, the former program, we only served four sites. Now, we're serving every site, because there are men at every single site. And so, our goal is to serve everyone as much as possible. The program model. What we did last time is that we had individuals who were stationary at four sites, working with the males at their site. This time, we have put together a cluster, a team, that will surround the student and work with the student in various areas according to where his or her strengths are. So, we have the coordinator who's going to work with the faculty champion, who will work with the provost and associate provost, student activities coordinators, and other support services to provide help to every male student who wants to participate in getting that help.
Question, Tanya. How do you know they need help? Are you waiting for them to respond? Are you grabbing them when you see that they are not functioning like other students are?
Right now, we're putting data together on all of our males to find out where they are in the pipeline. What we have learned so far is many of our male students have not declared a major, and so we know the first thing we need to do is reach out early on and help them learn what it is they want to do and why they're here. Because if they don't know why they're in school, certainly, they're not going to succeed. And so, we're working on data sets, just like what Dr. Jansen expressed, that she's doing with those students. We're working on capturing that same... We're working on capturing that same data and looking at that. The other thing we're doing is having a collaborative lab with our male students to learn what their needs are, instead of us trying to say, "Well, let's do this, let's do that, well, we should do this," because a lot of times, we know what we want, and they say that's not it. We had a meeting at Midtown with 12 African-American men, and we were way off point for what they wanted. We were way off point.
So, you're being proactive here.
Very proactive, very proactive. We, we have also had an opportunity to go to Gibbs', and I'll talk about that real briefly. But I wanted to show you that we're having a partnership with the community where there'll be an advisory board, a North County Board and a South County Board, and they will be individuals from the community who can provide support services and information for our students, whether they're K through 12 or Pinellas County. So, when you guys here at the college talked about a, a group, we were right on target with getting a group together that will have all those folks involved. And so, this is where we are with that, and the student's in the center. And so, instead of us coming down to the student saying, "This is what you need," we're going to have a learning plan or a success plan using our educational plan that we have right now to help a student find a roadmap so they'll know what they need. I am learning that, you know, it's not sort of like a one-size-fits-all, and so, we have to find a way to put a plan together for each individual according to his or her need.
Excellent.
I hope that, that helped. So, what are we doing right now? Creating partnerships and designing our marketing tools. That's, that's the first thing we're doing right now. And we have some guys who are working with us. They want to change the name of the program, and so, we're working with them on what kinds of things do we need to do to make it better. Nick Berry went and spent some time at Gibbs High School and met with Dr. Clark there, and we're trying to put together some sort of male core group that can partner with our college guys and, and encourage them to work with the high school students at Gibbs High School, to keep them in school, but to bring them on college campus, give them some experiences that they may not have gotten in the past. That's what the male outreach group is doing at Gibbs High School. Transition. We're finding that although males register for courses, they don't seem to fit in very easily at the college. And so, as soon as we find that they're applying, we're going after them. We're not waiting for them to come to us or to read something online. We're going after them. First thing we're doing is we're identifying our faculty champions. Our provost and associate provost are working on that right now, working on that advisory board, putting together an orientation, and engaging them early on. The retention piece, the first thing we're going to do is host that male summit, because we believe that they will be able to tell us what their needs are, instead of us trying to guess, get our libraries up, some activities going, and also workshops for next term. And then, the next thing is, is graduation or enjoying graduation. Our participants will receive case management and continuous advisement. We will not wait for them. We're going after them to give them the information. And then, we're going to pull back and ask them to come back and help us when they graduate to work with other males to go forward. In front of you, I know you, we don't have a lot of time, but if you could just look at page five of the comprehensive plan, it shows you what our goals are for this term. This term, our guys have only been together now for two weeks. Nick Berry has been here a little longer. Said has only been involved two weeks, and so, we're just putting everything together. You'll see where we're going there. But if you look at also the summer, you'll see that our goal was to have a summer program for rising ninth-grade male students who are coming to Gibbs High School so that they can get a sneak peek of high school, and then we'll grab them again at their graduation year and do a summer program here at the college so they can get a sneak peek of college as well. So, that's pretty much where we are with the program.
Questions for Dr. Williams?
Sounds excellent.
I think we all need to take this after this meeting and read it.
By all means.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. It's great to see action following a lot of conversation. This is action. So, it's, it's, and I know you all spent lots of time on this, planning this, so we certainly appreciate it, and we appreciate you taking the board's comments to heart because obviously, it's a big topic with us, and, and we appreciate the follow-through on this type of thing, so we all look forward to reading this.
And we look forward to different percentages.
Good. Thank you.
Any questions on item A? It doesn't need any approval. The only item I would like to question on A and B is the Brown &amp; Brown Insurance. We're doing a consultation with them, I guess. Doug, and what do we hope to achieve by doing that? And I guess this is tied into our insurance premiums in some ways for health insurance. Can you explain what we're trying to do there?
Yes, one, one of our goals this year is to, to take a very close look at our self-insurance plan. We've seen a lot of expansion in certain areas of our claims based on our benefit package, and so, we want to take this year and just do a really complete analysis of it, and it's a very specialized area, so we wanted to get, have some, some consultation along the way as needed as we hit the various-
And what will they do for us, Brown &amp; Brown?
Well, they're going to, they will help us primarily compare our package to the market. That, you know, that, that's a major one we want to look at to see where we compare to, to other employers. Another big one, I think, that came up at a prior meeting was our stop-loss.
Okay.
Want to look at our stop-loss, because we, we sort of have a one-year strategy in line there, but we, we want to look at that in the future, and those are probably the two major areas.
Dr. Law, I would ask if maybe, once this report is finalized, if maybe just an executive summary, one page, very high level, can be prepared for the board, just because this is something, we established this a number of years ago, the self-insured plan, and we established the reserves for it and that type of things. We would just like to say how we're doing on whatever this, Brown &amp; Brown is referring us to.
Mr. Chairman, my, my interest is to be sure we have somebody of Brown &amp; Brown's quality giving, looking over the horizon. The, the changes in Obamacare are coming from so many different directions. We have no capacity, our capacity is very limited to anticipate that. Brown &amp; Brown, of course, are the major players in that.
So, if we can get that, we'd appreciate help.
David, are you raising your hand?
Yes, I am. Mr. Chair, I, I would ask also, I mean, I think Hyatt Brown and his company, Mr. Brown &amp; Brown does a great job, but I would also remind the college and the President and other staff that if there are minority companies that can do some of this work, let's make sure that we, we reach out to them as well.
Okay. On this one, it's already a done deal, but I, for the future, that's who you're making your comment for, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay. Item B, any questions? Yes.
I just had a question, Dr. Duncan, on seven, A, and this is just really from my information, number 19, on the collections on delinquent student accounts. What, do you know roughly what percentage of student counts are delinquent? I'm not looking for a dollar number, I'm looking for like a percentage number.
Yeah, I don't recall specifically what the number is. It is growing, though, that, that part. I can, I can bring that to the-
I'd be curious to know that number. I'd also like to know what kind of success Williams &amp; Fudge has in recovering some of that. Just curiosity more than anything.
Ted, what, what, which one is that? I can't-
Number 19 on seven, okay, seven, A point one. Thank you. If you could let me know, that'd be great.
Why don't you share that with the whole board, too, please? Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions.
Good, good comments. Yes, sir.
On Follett, Doug, where, which, which number? Number three, and then, then it's pretty the same thing, I think, back here on number 24.
Right, okay.
When we put money up with Follett, is that an advance and we're going to get back? Or are those just costs that we're assuming, assuming as part of the college? Because we gave Follett $130,000 in, in item three for textbooks.
I believe those are for the high school, those are for the high school textbooks that we provide to the, to the students.
Okay, so that's part of, now, do, do we get reimbursed from the school board for those textbooks at all, or?
I, I don't, I don't think 24 is for the high school, or at least it doesn't seem it is for the high school.
Yeah, I think number three.
Number three, but do, do we get any reimbursement for that from the state or the school board for those textbooks?
I believe that's part of, of the grant, start of-
For three, it should be-
It's just part of the funding that we get, so, yeah.
School pays textbooks.
Right, okay, okay. Then, there's a reimbursement for the $130,000 in some form.
I don't think 24 has to do with the high school, though.
No, no.
Keep them separate.
The $40,000 there is for Microsoft Certificate Program.
But I was questioning more three on that.
Three looks like we would get reimbursed.
Right, well, that's what I was just questioning.
Okay, is that?
That answered my question. And also, I had a question on five. That's, Oasis Refreshment is the one right here in this building?
Yes.
And I think you know my concern on that.
Yes.
And we're doing something about it?
Yes, we're-
Okay, well, what is your concern? Oh, I got sick off the food.
Oh. Sick off the food, what?
Yeah, and I've heard other complaints when I found out that it wasn't, and I just wanted to be sure that we're on top of that to try to be sure that it's-
Okay.
We're working with that.
Any other questions concerning items A and B? We don't, we don't need a motion, they're just for, for information purposes. Is that right, Kim? Okay. Okay, let's move to C. Do we have a motion to approve all of item C? Motion's made, is her second. Motion's made and seconded, Mr. Brett seconded. A discussion on any of these? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Can we have a motion to accept all of D, and there are some discussion points here, but can we have, get it on the floor?
Can we have D and E?
D and E sounds good. Matter of fact, you do D, E, and F if you want.
I'll, I'll either accept, I was D and F.
And I would like to-
Second.
Motion's been made to accept D, E, and F. I want to point out that F, we've been handed a new F today, so y'all have this at your place, okay? And then, Dr. Law, I think we need to get an update on the church purchase and the juvenile welfare board.
We're prepared on both.
So, can we go ahead and give those reports now?
Yes, now. Good enough.
Because they're part of this motion.
And I guess the same thing on seven. We need to talk maybe a little more about that.
Right, that's part of the, the JWV. It's five and seven related.
Okay, okay, I didn't realize that, JWV.
Yep.
I'm not sure why we have to do it, too, but we did it.
On, on the church property, we have been working, I've been working with Mr. Lang and the Realtor to put together a term sheet that's acceptable, and we are, I would say, within two days of getting that term sheet to where it needs to be so that they can go ahead and present it to the church.
So, what we're doing in item four is just doing to meet the state mandated rules. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Spot survey, amends our five-year facility survey. When we did the five-year survey, we did not contemplate purchasing the church, so we're simply adding it.
Okay, and the same with the JWV on item number five?
That's correct.
It's just as simply to, to be technically correct with the state?
That is correct. We have to add it to our spot survey if we're going to acquisition property.
Okay, so now, go ahead and go over seven.
Number seven is the, the potential acquisition of the property at, which is the old JWV building, and this slide gives you an idea of where it is located in conjunction with the existing Health Education Center, and the red arrows show you that it's about four-tenths of a mile, and you can walk either way to get to the building. So, it's, it's fairly close. The property is 3.6 acres, four-story building. It has an interesting structural system which allows maximum flexibility within, in the building. We'll go in and modify the walls, make some large spaces. When we walk through, we look to see how flexible it would be for classroom-type of labs, classroom spaces for the Health Education Center. 209 parking spaces, about 50,000 square feet. We did a, a, a very quick analysis, code analysis, systems analysis, looked at the building, and we've got a few issues that we know as we move forward, we will need to deal with, but all in all, the building is, is really in good shape. It's got a lot of electrical and a lot of data within the building. We can move forward with NUHS and allow them to lease some of the portion of the first floor by simply going in and cleaning up some of the spaces, painting, that kind of thing. So, it's, it's in, it's in really good condition, and we are in the process of having an appraisal done. The appraisal will be completed by mid next week. And we have had some very preliminary discussions with JWV concerning the possible purchase and maybe some financing options on how we would do that with them.
Very good.
Is there any question that has arisen from the neighbors as far as, I would assume students will be going back and forth, possibly walking through the neighborhoods, or?
We've not done anything.
We have not done anything to, to address any of those issues at this point.
Do we anticipate any particular problems, or?
I don't anticipate any problems, but I think you make a really good point. The neighbors should hear about our plans from us. They should not read about it in the paper, and we'll get, we can have that done by the end of the week.
We can get, we can get to that as we move forward with this.
Is it anticipated that the students will have moving back and forth, and they'll be doing it by foot?
Dr. Nikotero, why don't you tell us about what you envision there? It's going to be minimal for what we-
Yeah, it would definitely be minimal movement, but there probably will be suffer so. So, I don't think we can, we can go ahead without having some movement back and forth. The first plan of Plan A that, that we've discussed is to move nursing into that building and, and to try to move the entire nursing program there, with the exception of, of one part of the nursing program, which is our simulated hospital, which would really be costly to move over to there. So, that may cost some moving. The other, the other moving part of students back-
Let me interrupt you, though, Dr. Nikotero, because you, we had this discussion, I thought you said that they can do it also in certain days where-
Correct, yes, we can minimize that.
-the health center, and then they wouldn't be at the other building. This doesn't mean none, but I mean, they could, they could segregate that into a day program over the other center.
Exactly. And the other thing that we would do is bring over and house some student services within that building, so that also illuminates the back-and-forth traffic.
And I thought you said, too, we would be renting part of it out to our, our-
Yes.
Our existing relationship.
Partnership, yeah.
Talk about that a little?
Yes, yes. They, at this point, they will be, be doing some laboratory-type rooms on the first floor. They, they are looking at possibly also, I, I think in the future, looking at possibly a piece of the second floor as well, but we, we have not sat down and worked all of that out.
This would be the chiropractic, so, correct?
Correct, correct.
Dr. Law?
I, I think, I just want to kind of make sure we're hearing and saying the same thing. The game plan is to not have students go back and forth during the day to the fullest extent possible, so that you don't have class at 10 o'clock at one place, and then you walk to the 1:00 at the other. That, that's not the game plan. That's not what we're going to do.
Correct.
There are some days where we simply, you, you go to one site or another, much like we went on the campus. You, you go to another park. I think it's really healthy for us to move the student services down there so that periodically every, other students go to that site as well, to keep everybody engaged with each other for those kinds of things. So, I think, again, you know, students, four-tenths of a mile is probably, if you park on one side of one of our campuses and walk to the other side, it's about the distance, so it's, it's not onerous. Not everybody's looking to march up and down, you know, four-tenths of a mile. The, the, having a-
Part of our wellness program, Dr. Law.
Yes, that's, you know, it's, I would hate to think students are going to get in their car to drive two blocks, but-
Well, that's a busy street. That's a-
But you can go the back way. Mr. Johnson, you see there's a, you don't have to walk on 66 right there. In fact, it's a, those are, those are, look to me, very tidy neighborhoods and, and-
Can you enter?
Yeah, that's a street, yes, yes.
Can you enter the, this campus area from that street?
Where the arrow is, yes.
Yes, 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 yes. You cross the street, but, but there is access to the parking lot, it's mostly on the south side, but you can come in right there where that arrow is.
The front door of the building faces on the north side of the property, so you would enter right there.
Mr. Gibbons?
66 Street, of course, has a sidewalk. Susan, does this match? Do you have sidewalks?
No.
No, it doesn't, no.
No, it doesn't, no.
But, but let me tell you, it's a very limited street as far as cars.
Sure, I mean, I mean, we should notify our neighbors, but if it's sidewalk, I mean, expect pedestrians.
Are sidewalks a issue on the back streets?
Okay. So then, if there's sidewalks, I mean, we notify our, the folks that are around us, our neighbors, but, I mean, they have to expect that there's going to be pedestrians on sidewalks.
Right. And there are, you know, there's a middle school close by there, and so at certain hours of the day, there are, there are kids walking back and forth through that neighborhood.
We, obviously, our choices for continued development of HEC are very, very limited. So our enthusiasm is simply that we see a glimmer here where we can take a big bite out of a problem for a good long while. Fifty thousand additional square feet is really nice.
And let me put this in some perspective for our board, because we were told years ago about the need for expansion of HEC, and we looked at two places, both across either Park Boulevard or 66th Street. So this is a heck of a lot better situation than having our students potentially trying to cross 66th Street or trying to cross Park Boulevard to, to still be as part of the campus here. So I mean, you know, it's all relative to what your other choices are, and those were other choices that we looked into. So this presents a much better situation for us, a much safer option for our students in my estimation. I mean, it just makes common sense, though.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we were able to, I think, acquire two, would be to the west there, a trailer park facility at one time.
That's where, that's the reason we were able to do the prosthetics building. A very troubled trailer park, too. I mean, it was not a mobile home park, it was a trailer park. Right by the weak trailer park.
And the other thing this does is it helps our parking and congestion problem at the health education center, which is very prominent at certain times of the semester. So it'll give us some relief there.
What question does, Mr. Brett, do you have any comments or questions on this? Bill Arakis? Everyone?
We will continue. I mean, even the starting price, I included in the memo, the asking price is 2.95 million. If you do the math, that's, that's attractive as a starting price, much as we.
We're hoping to, and we have a partner who we're dealing with. Let's face it, I mean, we went to them and, and the parking's very good here. I was shocked at the number of parking spaces that are available here. And they're all behind a very nice parking lot. It's a lot of pluses here.
Paying partner on day one. I mean, NUHS is in as a paying partner and at the very beginning. So we will continue to run hard. Now, we're going, as soon as everything's in place, we'll just keep moving forward on this project.
Well, if we're going to be voting right here, you're getting that green light. So this is quite significant, though, because this answers a problem we've been having. So any other questions? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All in favor of approving items of D, E, and F? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And thank you to the college for your efforts in this regard. This was a real good move forward. I now call the public hearing to order. Are there any comments from the public on our issues? Seeing none, we'll now have a motion, please, to approve item G.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The public hearing is now adjourned. I would entertain a motion that we approve item H, I, J, K, and L. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Dr. Law, do you have any discussion on item L for us?
We're happy to display it, sir, if that's, let's do that, I think that's healthy.
Yes, go ahead, Doug, please. Dr. Duncan.
I don't guess you see.
Fairly new doctor, so you have to get that. This has.
Kenny, are you seeing that up here or no?
Yes, yes.
We can see it here.
But you've sent it to us, thank you.
We need to make sure we have it on a sheet for you, okay?
Yeah.
More is not.
Just a few quick points. I think you'll see on our.
Do it over there for the chairman.
On our, as far as our spending trend year-to-date, on both our revenue and expense side, we're pretty much on.
Good.
Target of where we should be this time of year. Our, obviously, our tuition is the biggest chunk of revenue, is way up. The state appropriation is up disproportionately, as I've said in the past, because baccalaureate funds are now included in that. You see a corresponding reduction in baccalaureate fees down here. Let me click over here for a second. This is just the year-to-date based on our prior year trend line. And you see our revenue's just a little above the trend line, our expense is just a little bit below. If you, if you look at it long-term, this is the same chart, but last month, we had about a fifteen million, a little over fifteen million dollar surplus of revenue over expense. This month, we're, that's reduced to about ten million. We anticipate next month that it will, it will come down dramatically, which we expect at this time of year. Our expenses will go up, our revenue levels off.
Is there, do you have any feel from the state level as far as state funding? Will there be any anticipated reductions?
At, at the business officer meeting two weeks ago, we were, we were told by John Holdenach from the state office that right now, they were not anticipating a reduction this year. So, so far, so far, that's what we've heard. That could change, of course, if something, something happens, you know, with the next quarter.
I see Senator Jones is here, and he's not, he's not filing, so I assume that he knows no more than you do.
Okay, any other questions?
I think, I think as part of this report, you know, I'm sure Dr. Law takes a look at this when you give this report to him, and he probably asked several questions on it. And those are probably the pertinent points that the board wants to know, is, you know, where, you know, are we on track? What are the anomalies in here? What are the things that, so I would hope that, you know, maybe those notes.
Okay.
Should be the same questions Dr. Law is asking, because he's kind of, would ask the questions that the board's going to be taking a look at.
Yes, I usually review this with him on the Monday.
Yeah, I'm still learning a lot about the spending patterns, so, but I'm happy to share those. I mean, I ask exactly those questions, you know, look at the variable cost, adjunct construction.
If, based revenue, where we think it is, you know. As part of this monthly thing, if we can get those notes, you know, capsulize those into a note form and share with the board.
Ken, I think just to follow up, what we're looking for are the red flags. If there are problems, we'd like to know about them, because I know now people who are running for office saying, well, the auditor didn't tell us, you know. And since Ken and I have some background, we would be expected to know if there are problems just from looking at it. And I don't think either one of us would like to be blindsided and miss the rest of the board.
I share your concern about that. So let's, no, I, we're trying to get, you know, the key indicators up there. You know, what is the health of the institution? And then when you get an anomaly, you go and look further. Is there something there that we want? So we're happy to share, you know, how we're handling the high points. That's really what I want this to be every month, so thank you.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Just one thing I would like to point out with the foundation annual financial report. It was good to see, it's a positive report because of the appreciation that took place because of the stock market, basically. But our, our contributions are very low for a foundation that shouldn't be as active. And I know you're working on getting us a new foundation director, but basically, it was a million five in contributions, which, I mean, we need to be a heck of a lot more aggressive than that. As the economy continues to slowly turn around, you know, we just need to be in the leader on there. So I guess that's, I think you share that same vision there.
Well, I hope when we do get the new director, that that person will be one who is capable of going out and into the community, and our community, I guess, is our audience here in the county, and raising those additional funds. Because you're, you're right on. We need to have more scholarships and larger scholarships. And the foundation, I know, is limited in the amount of scholarships and the amount of dollars that they can contribute. So the scholarship money is, in my mind, not as adequate as it needs to be.
One other thing, just while we're discussing this, since the Leaper Ratner is on here, there was a very nice event at, at the Leaper Ratner Museum, and Terry, you were there. Do you want to talk a little bit about it?
And I'm glad, I was, I was going to mention it. Mr. Whitehall is here. Sir, thank you. That was a great event, the lighting of the new sign outside, and kudos to you on a great evening and everyone else who was involved on that. I know Ms. Bill Arakis and Mr. Burke and myself were there, I'm not sure, and of course, Dr. Law. It was a good crowd and a great event. Very nice.
And you did a nice job of keeping the rain away from us.
Yeah, it's true.
It's hard to do, I think it rained everywhere around us except right on the darkened campus at that time. So it was a very festive event, wasn't it?
It was beautiful at night.
And the watercolor show, let me tell you, it's there till November, when?
Seventh.
Seventh. Y'all should make it there. If you like watercolor, it is a beautiful, beautiful exhibit there. So try to make it there. Let's vote on items H through L, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item M, before we vote on that, would, Dr. Law, would you please talk about that?
Yes, we have, I think, on a couple occasions, given you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Teasers about the impending start of our Institute for Strategic Policy Studies. This is an initiative that was funded several years back, so we have significant funding to operate this going forward. I think it had several different lives with change of leadership here and change of plans with Congressman Young and some other things. So it was an item that was ready for revisiting and refocusing. Vice President Jones and Jim Oliver took some leadership. We retained the services of Mr. David Clement, who had been working with the Public Service Commission, but more importantly, had significant background in organizing and initiating a very similar center in Manatee County that actually was quite well-recognized. More importantly, actually had funding stream associated with it. David spent a great deal of energy talking to all the internal constituencies, talked to all the external constituencies, scoping out what an institute like this might be able to contribute. Along the way, we spent a good deal of time making sure that it had integration with our other academic programs. I think even though we were still in the development phase, we took the initiative under this emerging umbrella to organize three very successful community interactions regarding the oil spill. Each one was better than the one before, because we got better and the issues got more defined. The final Saturday one got very, very high marks for that kind of an approach. So we've sort of pilot-tested that indeed, we can get several hundred people to an event if the event is well-organized, on target, those moving forward. We've held back just, I think, to get our comfort level on funding and some of the dynamics of the election and those. You have our complete program plan. As you see, it's a very exhaustive program plan. And I think we have touched all the bases on this project. And with your vote today, the ship sails. I think we are ready to go. I think it's very well-conceived and on the upside if we'll move forward. Please know, we have vetted it closely with Congressman Young's office, who has a great deal of interest in this project.
I know the document itself needs to be high-level, and it is. And I want to thank Dr. Oliver and Representative Long and Senator Jones for their help with the, the events that we've had there, because y'all have made it successful. And you know, and I see, you know, around the country, Harvard obviously has their Institute of Government. In Florida, we have the Collins, which you sit on the board of, and the James Madison Institute. And in Washington, there's all types, I'm a member of the Heritage Foundation. I mean, these government think tanks and organizations. And I think, you know, the challenge to us is obviously, we don't have an endowment that some of those other organizations I just mentioned may have or the funding. But I hope that there's a, we carve out some type of niche where this government institute becomes the expert in that area. And I don't know what that area is. I don't know where we can, you know, maybe it's a tie-in with the sunshine law, with the, having the Poynter Institute or something like that here, or, you know, something where it becomes the recognized, you know, we've had an ethics program, maybe ethics in government. Maybe that will be, I'm just, you know, brainstorming, I have no idea where we should go, but I hope we can, can cut out something, because I think if we become a generalist and try competing against those institutions, which I mentioned, it will be dwarfed and never, never. So if we can figure out what our mission is there in a more defined way when it gets to that point, I know these documents keep us still broadly, but I think it would serve the, the institute really well if we can be known as the group that you go to when you need research in this area, when you need a topic to be covered in this particular area of government. And that's just a thought of mine. Debra?
I was making a motion, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, maybe this is something we could.
Did we not have him? Did we not make a motion? Would you please make the motion then?
I would like to move that we accept item.
Is there a second? Now get the discussion, I'm sorry. Thanks for keeping me on track there, Debra.
You know, one of the things we might consider, and we might do this at our January 18th meeting, we have become a leader in the community college moving forward in the various areas. And some of that would entail governance, and maybe that would be a thought process. Maybe we can talk more about what we want from this institute, instead of that we get together on the 18th. Because it's, we have done certain things in the way of leadership, and I call that governance, as a, as a community college and as an institution, all the way through our life, as I can recall, from St. Petersburg College to St. Petersburg Junior College, you know. And maybe that's a facet, just continuing what we think this college should be and then helping others to do that.
Debra?
I'd just like to make sure that we don't get too far off track and allow Congressman Young to have some say-so on that.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm in a discussion.
Very close, very close. I think, you hear me, it has to be tied to our academic program. If it's not, it's destined to fail. And you don't want that, and I don't want that. And I think your guidance, Mr. Chairman, is, is right on par with that. It also has to have some public pizzazz. I mean, the term solutions was artfully placed in. There's an institute, you, you think of a name, and I'm telling you, there's an institute with that name, okay? So our goal, though, was as, you know, our heritage really is service to our community. So I don't want us to be just a think tank. I want us to be something that takes the best research and then applies it as best we can to the lives of our citizens. So that's our initiation.
And we look forward to the more specific recommendation when you get to that point. So. Okay. Do we, do we vote on that? Yes, Mr. Brett?
Is Mr. Clement here?
Clement?
I didn't, he is not here today, okay? I think this is a fantastic document. And I really appreciate everybody's efforts on, on kind of simplifying this monumental task to my simple mind, because it's focusing on Pinellas County and our mission. And one of the things that popped in my mind when you were talking about the task force earlier on African-American males, I mean, that, to me, is, it fits this document almost perfectly, as far as our mission, integrating it with our academic goals. It's a Pinellas County problem. We had the superintendent here. And I'm not saying that's what we need to do, but it's, it's a great example of how this institute could really get its legs. You have an aggressive timeline here to get this thing kind of up and running by January, I think I saw. And so when Mr. Johnson talked about next summer, I thought, well, you know, maybe. One question I had, the seven million, at one point in this document, I thought I saw referenced as an endowment. Is that how it's going to be treated, or did I read that wrong, or did I not read it at all?
I, I'm looking for a little bit of help, because at times, I don't.
I think it might have a line in there that the, Mr. Clement put in that says endowment?
Yeah.
It's not an endowment.
Okay.
Under the legislature, it would be our choice to do that. I mean, that's the way you could go, was live off the interest. But right now, for example, if there were some facility needs at the front end.
But right now, for example, if there were some facility needs at the front end, it's, it's our money.
Well, that was, when I, when I thought I saw it listed as a, as a, as an endowment, my question was, where's the startup coming from? So. And it, it's operational. I mean, that money has to let us afford for the first two, three years until it has its own revenue. And that's, that's what I originally thought when I spoke, then that's incorrect, we'll change that.
Good point.
We're always wondering about the revenue sources.
Well, you, you end up with grant opportunities or contracts to actually do work and then deliver products, and a good think-tank always has those in, in stream. I'd like to think that there's some potential for a membership, some, some kind of identity where people contribute to that. Third, there's always a possibility that if we can tie it close enough to our oper, to our own internal operations, that some piece of the funding could be picked up through that source, if it's making a real impact in our classroom or those proposals. So I think, you know, you have, there's, there's no one source of money for this, but there are places, there'll always be a close call, but there are places that do this.
Good questions, good discussion.
Well, I think Dennis and Mr. Oliver did a great job, and I'm glad Dennis was on the committee.
And Janet?
And Janet did a great job as well.
And Janet, yeah.
Okay, all in favor of item M? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimously, very enthusiastically, accepted. President's report, sir.
Let me just, we have a very cool analogy. We, we're not ready by any stretch of the imagination today, but next month you would expect the naming issue, but little things matter. I believe we finally have a complete inventory of named commitments and existing naming. So we have, we brought that inventory completely current. We are, as we have asked around to get guidance on, on naming processes, it's, it has to be twofold. This board has to always have the final say. We have to include the foundation board, because more likely donations, naming, the philanthropic kinds of donations would come through that process. The, the naming opportunities, though, you know, it's, it looks to me the important thing would be to split philanthropic from service and, and high-identity recognitions. And we'll, we'll have to have a policy that allows for both to occur, but lets them run on, on dual tracks. So we are in the process of working through that. We're, I think I can get you a draft in the next week or two, and then we can have a discussion in November. This is a careful discussion.
All right.
You have to give yourself the ability to unnamed buildings if events require that, and the, the relationship between this board and the foundation needs to be carefully described so that they don't do something that they have to back up on and you don't feel squeezed.
Well, they're all building, but I don't mean to sound like that.
Yeah, no, and it's important.
That's legally, we're the only ones who can name a building.
That's correct. But, but we should have a system when they bring us a suggestion, you have a comfort level that it's been through a certain guideline. So we're, we're pretty close, but it's, it needs a few more hours of my attention.
And one thing, obviously, which, I'm a, I've always been a big signage guy. You know, the identification, like if, if this is the George Lynch Auditorium in Nowhere, you, you need a, you know, a detective novel to try to figure out where, where it's called that on the campus, and you don't see it on the campus map, you don't see it on the building, you don't see any lettering, well, that's very nice, we're honoring one of our former presidents in that way, but unless it's of adequate, it should be fairly systematic throughout the, the college of, of the lettering on something, same with the Don Sullivan thing. I mean, when I mentioned to you that this was, the Don, this building had been dedicated to Don Sullivan, well, it was a surprise to you, and it's, I'm not surprised by that, because there's no adequate lettering here that, that designates it as such.
We are, we are literally documenting all of those so that we can show the variability of that, but I think we owe it to the people who we've honored to make sure that, that that's pretty obvious, so.
Great. I appreciate this document. Any questions for the president?
Aren't we?
No?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, two other quick items, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I had indicated to you that I would bring you a plan for faculty hiring, and the plan is, is 99% ready, but it'll hold till November. The, we have the most curious situation this year, we have almost no retirees, a very small number, four or five. And of course, the plan always anticipated spending the money from retirees on the new faculty. So we're, we've got the plan, I think it must do the faculty position catch-up over two years rather than one. So we'll give the plan in November, okay? Unless, I just want to-
I think that's partly due to the economy.
Yeah, I know, but I've made a living of kind of spending the money after people retire. You know, again, if you look, faculty are the, the one group who, you retire at a very different salary level than, than the entry requires to pay. So we'll bring that, I bucked it off at the last second, just because there were some big numbers on that thing. Last piece, I just want you to, to be, in follow-up, we had a meeting with our friends from USF St. Pete down at the Hangar Restaurant. We brought all of our academic leadership staff, 15 or 20 of our people, they had 15 or 20 of their people. We'll give a full report, but there's five or six projects that came out of that to, to follow up on the meeting we had board-to-board. So those relationships are outstanding right now, and I think you will see us working with both better articulation, better hiring, and then full-program articulation between the two institutions. Very positive meeting, Margaret Sullivan deserves a lot of credit.
Do you want to give that?
Well, no, we'll bring up, we'll bring a list for you, okay? But I do want you to know that, that it was a really good meeting, so we did follow up.
Again, actions afterwards are very important.
Done.
That's all I have. That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Gibbons?